Thank you for coming. It is 7:00 PM and I call the September 22nd, 2025 School Board Meeting to Order. The Holman Board of Education and the School District of Holman acknowledge that our schools are located on the ancestral homelands of the Ho-Chunk, Sackett-Fox, and Dakota Peoples. We celebrate and honor these lands and their sacred significance to indigenous peoples. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Board Clerk Maggie Smith, would you please call the roll?
Chris Lau.
Here.
Lindsay Nead.
Here.
Maggie Smith here. Bridget Todd Robbins.
Here.
Barb Wunsch.
Here.
Abigail Holtie.
Here.
Jennifer Deek.
Here.
Khadija Islam.
Here.
All right, with seven of the seven board members present, I declare a quorum. I note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to this agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Chris has moved?
Second.
Maggie has seconded to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. And we do not have any public participation this evening. So moving on to the District Administrator's Report. Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, I'll keep this short this evening, but I just wanted to thank everyone for making Homecoming such an amazing week for our students and community. I just think of all the hours that went into that between the staff that helped the younger kids build the floats and all the energy they had doing that to our high school students that had activities that they led and planned. And I just think of all the people that go into the planning and then our Holman Area Foundation. And they had the block party and had, you know, hundreds of people there for that before the game. And just all the events and all the spirit, it was just, and the students were, just did a great job with just having fun with everything. So, and the dance and all the, just all the preparations. So, we thank the community for coming and joining us in the Homecoming festivities. And just thank you to all those that put all the time and effort into making it so grand.
All right, moving on to recognition and thank yous. Dr. Mueller.
Well, first I wanted to start with, coming up on October 2nd, it's National Custodians' Day. We just want to make sure that we recognize our custodial staff and our maintenance and those that lead them. You just think of how they day in, day out, make sure that we have a nice, clean, safe learning environment for our students. So, October 2nd, we'll be celebrating them more. And then also, I just want to take a moment. October 5th, the week of October 5th, is Wisconsin School Board Week. So, that's a time to thank all of you sitting at the table. This job is not one that you, is just, it takes time and dedication and just appreciate all and everything that each one of you do. And just appreciate your leadership and all your advocacy for our students and our staff in the district. It's just very important. So, thank you very much. So, let's thank you to our school board. All right. Big crowd here tonight. And then, just our Holman Area Foundation just wanted to recognize them. They had their golf outing and they presented at the football game the other day. They presented a check for $13,000 to our Activities Department. So, that's wonderful because all those dollars go a long ways with providing activities for our students. And then lastly, just a thank you to Nexus Solutions for supporting us in the school district and allow, they really helped us enough having our, we really like our themed t-shirts each year. So, that donation was very, we were very grateful for that too. So, thanks to them.
All right, moving on to reports and discussion. Item 9.1, Holman High School Academic and Career Planning Counselor, Lindsay Sype will present the Annual Advancement Placement Report. This item will appear on the consent agenda.
Hi, everybody. I'm Lindsay Sype. I'm the career counselor at the high school. I said to Kim back again to present the AP and all the college courses information. So, we're going to start with the AP Advanced Placement Update. So, for those of you who aren't familiar, Advanced Placement courses are offered at the high school every year. And some reasons why students may decide to take AP courses. So, students can save significant time and money in their post-secondary schooling, dependent on how they do on their AP exam, which we'll talk about. It can help students stand out in their college admissions process when they're applying to different schools. Students can have a head start in their college degree based off of the credits that they bring in through AP. Helps students acquire the skills and habits that they need to be successful in college. So, taking those upper-level rigorous, excuse me, rigorous courses can really prepare them for college. And then improving different academic skills, writing skills, problem-solving abilities, things like that. So, in the 24-25 school year, these are the courses that we offered through Advanced Placement at the high school. And this has stayed pretty consistent, I would say. Physics 1 is probably the class that some years we offer, some years we don't. But the rest of them, including US Government, that's been back the last two years, have been pretty consistent. So, we offer the same courses. So, students who earn a 3 or greater on the AP exam, which students take at the first two weeks of May, are likely to receive some kind of credit. So, that credit can differ, dependent on the university that they attend. But it's based off a 0-5 scale and students who earn a 3, 4, or 5 will likely see some college credit for those exams. So, here's a graph of our participation. And so, as you can see, 11 to 13 classes are offered each year. Last year, we had 182 students and 254 exams that were given. Again, that's all the testing is done at the district office and we test the first two weeks of May. This past year was the first year that I would say, I think 80% of it was digital. So, that was a different adventure for all of us. But it went off great and much easier, I think, for kids. The biggest complaint I think we hear from kids is all the writing that they're not used to when it's a paper pencil. So, I think they all would much prefer digital than paper pencil.
Are those administered on their?
On their Chromebooks, yep.
Chromebooks.
Yep, exactly. Okay, so here's a school summary of our participation. So, the total number of students at the high school that received a 3 or better on their exam was 84%. So, up from 2024. It continues to, I think, amaze me just watching these students go through that testing process and all the stress and worry and how much time they put in preparing and then so many of them do so well. So, again, 182 students, 254 exams, and then 153 students that scored a 3 or higher on those exams. So, here's a little breakdown of who's participating. So, primarily, we have AP US History, which is a 10th grade class, and that's where our 10th grade numbers primarily come from. And then 11th and 12th grade is where we see the majority of our AP students. We also have a lot of students who are in multiple AP classes. And so, they'll take anywhere from 2 to 5 exams throughout those first two weeks of May. Here's a breakdown of our demographics. And so, we had 17 Asian students, 3 Hispanic or Latino, 147 white students, 8 that were 2 or more races, and then 7 that chose not to respond. And a breakdown of our male and female and not specified gives us a different idea as to who's taking the courses. And then, students who qualify for free and reduced lunch get a, if you qualify for free lunch, you get to test for free. And then if you qualify for reduced lunch, you get a discounted price for your exam. And then other students pay $99 per exam that they wish to take. So, here's a breakdown of that as well. And then this is a breakdown per subject, so how students scored. So, you can see that 91% of our students in Language and Composition scored a 3 or higher. 100% of our Lit and Comp students scored a 3 or higher, which is awesome. 83% for Computer Science A, 88 for Computer Science Principles, 85 for AP US History, which is really great, especially for sophomores. I mean, they're, it's their first try, I should say, at taking an AP exam and an AB course, which speaks volumes. 93% for Calc AB and 100 for BC, 82% for Stats. You'll see that our number of AP Statistics classes significantly dropped. So, we usually have, I would say, probably about 50 to 60 students test in AP Stats. My next presentation will talk about dual credit. And last year, many more students chose the dual-credit route instead of the AP exam. So, that's why there's a significant drop in that number of testing. And then 64 for Biology, 67 for Chemistry, and 95 for US Government, and then 100% for Physics as well.
Any questions on AP?
Yes, or like our sciences, the Biology and Chemistry seemed a lot lower for the percent of students passing than the others. Is there a reason that you, I mean, does it have to do with, I don't know, what does it have to do with?
Yeah, I don't know what it would have to do with. You know, we've had some staff changes. So, I think new staff teaching AP Chemistry for the first year. And I think sometimes we just see ebb and flow with students, right? Like, some years we see higher testing, some years we see lower testing. Yeah.
Have you seen, so I guess, I'll characterize, like, it seems like in higher education over the last, at least since I've been in college, there's been less of an emphasis on testing as a mechanism to attain entrance or credit.
Yep.
Are you seeing those trends impact AP with like, maybe more of the dual-credit option where we're emphasizing like, you know, student effort and out, like, over the test score that used to be so important?
I think overall, the dual-credit numbers are drastically increasing over AP exams because it's not just about one exam.
Okay.
So, I think some students are like, yeah, I'm confident in the class and I'm doing well in the class, but to put all my eggs in one basket just based off that exam score is super stressful.
Right.
And especially students who are taking multiple. So, I think students are leaning more towards dual-credit than they are AP. Yeah.
Are the classes the same? So, if you're taking like the AP Statistics class, is that also the dual-credit course?
So, for some. So, AP Stats is AP Stats/Math 225.
Okay.
So, students who are in that class have the choice. They can just take it for high school credit. They can take the AP exam, or they can take it for dual-credit with UW River Falls. Or, we have some students who took it for dual-credit with UW River Falls and also took the AP exam.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's the only class that really overlaps though, right? Because the rest of these classes I didn't, I don't think I saw.
Correct. Yep, exactly.
All right, any other questions? Okay, and moving on to item 9.2. Lindsay will continue with the Early College Credit Program, Start College Now, and the Dual-Credit Program Report. This is also for report only. It will not appear in a consent agenda.
Okay. So, I'm going to talk about Early College Credit, Start College Now, Transcripted Credit, and Dual Credit. So, a little bit of everything. So, starting off, Early College Credit and Start College Now. So, we offer these two programs. Early College Credit is typically with UWL. Start College Now is with Western. The Turbo, we don't have a lot of students that attend the Turbo for these programs, but they have the ability to do that as well. Students qualify for these programs. They can receive both high school and credit at the college. The biggest difference is that students either do these courses virtually or they leave our building. So, that's the difference from dual-credit to Start College Now or Early College Credit. Students have to complete an application. The application for the fall semester is March 1st. And then, the application for the spring semester is October 1st, and these are set by the state. So, they're pretty firm deadlines. I would say right now, we've got a lot of kids who are anxiously getting in all their apps for the October 1st deadline. So, kind of our process for these programs, students meet with their school counselor first to express interest in this, these programs. And then after, they talk about which courses maybe they want to take, if it fits into their career plan. If they've maxed out their course options at the high school, then they essentially would send them to me to talk about through the application process. So, we have the students fill out the application. Then Mr. Sackett and myself sit down. We go through all of the different applications, talk about the courses that students are requesting, how they're doing at the high school, things like that. And then we forward those applications on to the post-secondary institution. And then I meet with every student and their parent to go over kind of a contract, just to make sure students are aware, or students and families are aware of the programs and what it all entails.
Do you ever face any difficulty getting parents involved with those meetings?
Not really, truthfully, no. I mean, sometimes it takes a few reminders for the students, but I always say that we have to have the contract meeting before they can register, and that usually gets things moving. Yes. So, for Early College Credit and Start College Now, for the fall of 2025 currently, so we have students who are taking 9 credits at UWL, no students at the Turbo, and then 43 credits at Western. So, I would say the majority of our students participate in Start College Now over the Early College Credit Program. Early College Credit, it's pretty specific to courses for students. So, they've exceeded all of our math options. They want to go for a degree that goes into math. And so then they're taking Calc III or something like that. Also, Computer Science seems to be a really big one. They've taken both of our AP Computer Science courses, and then they're taking a 300-level Computer Science at UWL. And then, for Western, I would say the biggest courses are CNA. We have a ton of students who are taking the Certified Nursing Assistant. And then Intro to Sociology, Medical Terminology, Anatomy and Physiology, and then Race, Class, Gender, and Intro Ethics are kind of our big hitters for Start College Now. And again, we're anticipating lots of applications, but they're coming in quickly right now for spring. So, here's kind of a breakdown of who's participating in these two programs. And so, we have four males and 12 females currently. And then the race and ethnicity background as to who's participating. This program is offered to all students. So, we talk about it during our four-year planning meetings, when the counselors go into each English class to talk about course planning. It's also in our Course Description Guide, so it's kind of talked about with all students. Here is a five-year trend of Early College Credit and Start College Now. So, I would say that it kind of ebbs and flows, but it definitely took an increase for credits that students took last year, specifically at Western. Again, I think when I started six years ago, we had 5 to 7, 8 students in CNA, and I think I had 25 last year alone, just that took Certified Nursing Assistant. So, that continues to grow. So, here's the financial impact of kind of what we're going to see for the fall of this school year. And so, here's kind of a breakdown as to what it would cost the School District of Holman for UWL versus if a student were to take these courses as a freshman at UWL, and what that saves families. And then the cost of the Western credit for Start College Now, which is different than the Transcripted Credit, which I'll talk about next. So, our in-house college credit program, I would say that continues to grow. I think each year we have a new partnership or offer some new courses. Transcripted Credit courses are courses that are taught in the high school by high school staff. And it's in collaboration with Western. Our high school teachers are required to meet certain qualifications dependent on what the class is to teach those courses. And once the teacher is approved through their transcript and credentials, things like that, all staff members have to attend a seminar. So, we all attended a full-day seminar at Western this summer. And that gave us opportunity to meet with the different department deans and instructors to talk curriculum and kind of what our rollout would be of classes and how that aligned with the competencies and expectations of Westerns. And then, at the end of the course, high school teachers submit grades on the Western Blackboard platform. And so, students, college transcripts then start. And so, at that point, they get a college grade and they also get a high school grade. These are the Transcripted Credit courses that we offer now. Added to the, this list as of, I, what, Tuesday last week is Small Engines. So, like I said, we're constantly adding to this list, but it's a really good variety, I feel like, for students. We kind of cover, you know, almost every department. And so, students really have this opportunity throughout their four years, which is really awesome. And it really speaks highly of our teachers, that they're all willing to kind of go above and beyond to teach these Transcripted Credit courses. So, the financial impact, Transcripted Credit is free. It does not cost us anything and it doesn't cost students anything. So, for the 24-25 school year, 819 students earned Transcripted Credit at the high school, which was a total of 2,667 total Transcripted Credits earned. And the average cost, if you were to go to Western, would be 138 to 186 per credit, depending on the course. So, the savings is $422,968.75, which I feel like every year that amount just kind of blows my mind. So, again, it doesn't cost families anything and it doesn't cost the district anything. So, again, we have a new partnership, which is with CVTC, Chippewa Valley Technical College. We are starting to offer Engine Theory 1A, Transcripted, with our Holman High School Small Engines course. We currently have, this school year, four sections of this course. So, a lot of students that will be able to get this credit. We're going to register all of these students next week. We've learned CVTC has a little bit of a different way of doing things, which is good for all of us to branch out and try different things. So, it will be good to collaborate with them and continue to kind of see what offerings they have that maybe Western doesn't have that we can offer our students. So, other in-house college credit is dual-credit. So, dual-credit is, again, taught by our staff. However, students have to pay a discounted price for tuition for these courses. So, slightly different from Transcripted Credit. We have a few different partnerships for dual-credit. First one being UW-Green Bay, and we offer French IV. Primarily, we have a few students in French V right now. But students can earn 11 retroactive credits if they earn a B or higher in French 202, which is our French IV, with a total of 14 credits. Or if they get a B or BC or a C, they can earn 5.5 retroactive credits, which is a total of 8.5 credits. So, again, at a discounted price. And then we also partner with UW-Oshkosh, and that's for our Adventure Education course with Jared Bagneski. And students can earn three credits for that class. And then UW River Falls, I would say, is kind of our biggest partner. So, we offer Engineering Design, Math 225, which is that AP Stats course as well, English 100, and then an addition this year, second semester, which will be English 106. So, you can kind of see, we have two credits for Engineering Design, four credits for that Math 225, and then three credits for the English courses. And then, this year also new, we are collaborating with UW-Lacrosse for Spanish IV. And so, we have a lot of students, we have about 30 students, I think, that have taken advantage of that. So, again, students based off their grade could earn retroactive credit as well. So, for the 24-25 school year, here's a breakdown of how many students earned dual-credit or participated in dual-credit. It's an optional program. So, again, we have students who may choose to just take it for high school credit, which is great, or participate in the dual-credit. So, we had 24 students in French 202, or our French IV, 11 students in Adventure Education, 29 students in Spanish, and then 34 students in English 100. I think we have close to 80 in English 100 this year. And then Math 225 had 28 students and Engineering 15 students.
So, tell me again, dual-credit does cost?
Yeah, yep. So, to give you an idea, like, our English 100 students pay $330 for three credits.
Does financial aid play a role into any of that?
So...
That couldn't pay that?
Yeah, so UW River Falls has a discounted rate for free and reduced students. And UW-Green Bay offers a scholarship for a discounted rate. UWL does not, and UW-Oshkosh does not. Any questions about any of those?
You might have said this, and I'm trying to take it all in.
Yeah, that's okay.
So, this, these universities are offering these credits. So, what if you went somewhere else or transferred? Do you still get those credits?
Yeah, good question. So, it depends on your university of where you go and how they come in, okay? So, let's use like English 100 as an example. For most UW schools, it's going to go in as your English 100. It's going to transfer as your English 100, and you're going to get those three credits. Let's say you go to a school down south or something that isn't close to us. It may come in as a general elective credit, but you're still getting transferred credits to come in. I would say the majority for Math 225 and our Englishes specifically, they transfer one for one. So, their English transfers as English, your math transfers as math.
Okay. And that's also why some might choose the dual-credit and the AP exam, because the AP would give you the score. So, if you did the dual-credit, you might just, it might work on some, but the AP score is a lot more translatable.
Right.
Would be my assumption, I guess.
Although, just like personal experience, I took a student to a UWL and a Turbo tour this summer, and we were told, take as many dual-credits as you can. AP doesn't always come in. Take as many dual-credits as you can. So, it's, I think it's very different per university. Yeah.
I would just say, many of our students are starting college at sophomore-level status at this point, just because of all these opportunities and that, no matter where they go. And I just thinking, you know, even from personal experience, going to a school that might have very high value on a credit and you're able to pay $100 for it here and transfer it again is just outstanding. It really helps.
Absolutely.
Helps our families and the student.
Definitely.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions?
Oh, just this 25% reimbursable on the UWL credits for the school district? Where does, what's the 25%? We can just go back. Sorry, it's...
Am I close? Yep, you're on it. Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, sorry. So, my understanding, and Kim, you can chime in if I'm wrong, but the state, so we, I filled out a form for the state and they reimburse at the end of the school year, correct?
Exactly. That's kind of why the ECCP and Start College Now are two different programs. Because the, the, um, technical colleges could not compete for tuition rates if they were reimbursable. So, there's no reimbursement for any of the Western classes.
Okay.
But there is a partial reimbursement for any of the universities.
Oh.
Just because their tuition is more.
Sure. And that's not dual-credit, just early college credit. Right, okay. Yeah.
Okay, anything else? All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right, moving on to item 9.3. Director of Transportation, Dan Garrett, will now present the Staffing Update. This item will appear on the October 13th consent agenda.
Hello. We're looking at two, I don't know which one, just begin to, we're looking at two new positions for this school year. Last year, we went without a special, specialized transportation driver and a specialized transportation education assistant. And we really felt it throughout the year. This year, we kind of be getting the same way. At the start of the year, everything looked like it was going to work, you know, when you see it on paper. But then we start looking at the enrollment we have and the ECSE students we have and the 4K students that we're transporting. Now, we're transporting a lot of those students in vans, which is efficient. And so, you look at, when you have four A students in the vans, and then you have to get out, remove car seats, put them back in. And right now, we're kind of at our max with the number of students we can transport in our vans. And they're, they have been requested and would like to be used elsewhere. But without another driver at one of our elementary schools for specialized transportation, it's not working out as well as we thought it would, as well as we're hoping it would. So, we're looking at posting for that position. One of the positions would be the... One of the positions would be the Special Education Driver, which is going to follow the same pay scale as a normal bus driver, which is about twenty-five eighty-nine an hour. We're looking at approximately four hours a day for this position. And to go hand in hand with this position is a Special Education Assistant, which we're following the same pay scale and is going at twenty eighty-five an hour, again, with about four hours per day. This is about approximately two hours in the AM and two hours in the PM. So we're looking to post these positions as soon as we can, so we can try and fill them and relieve some of the burden that we're seeing on some of our transportation and schools right now.
So when you say specialized transportation, that is kids with IEPs that have transportation, transportation in their IEP?
Correct.
Is this the only bus that does that, or do you have other buses that do that as well?
We've always, traditionally, we've had one at every elementary school, so we've had four. Last year, we were able to do it with three, but we had, as the school year went on, the numbers at the schools kept increasing. So when we started the school year, we thought one school was going to have one student that, with an IEP for transportation. But as the school year went on, we ended up having about six at that school due to families moving in, students moving from one location to another. And we were kind of looking at the same thing this year. When the, a week or two before school, it looked like everything was going to be fine, and then as teachers came back and as more enrollments happened, it's not working out like we were hoping and planning.
Okay. Any other questions?
Are there any sort of special certifications that are more difficult to find for specialized transportation drivers and assistants?
It's not really a difficult, they do require another test that they have to go take. We send them to Gunderson, and that is a test that they perform under the direction of a physician to make sure that they can properly care for and transport and move in case there is an emergency situation. We still work with the school nurses and buildings as far as training for each individual with an IEP that's on that bus.
Awesome. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background materials on each item, or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. Would any board member like to pull an item out of the consent agenda to be discussed and/or voted on separately? How to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided?
So moved.
Motion by Barb.
A second.
Second by Chris. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, moving on to the Board Debrief. I will call upon board members and ask you to present any comments or committee reports you have. And tonight, we'll start with Chris.
No, I'm just, I'm glad we had a good, hope, coming week. I know we got able to go and enjoy the parade and the, the pre-game party, I'll call it, tailgate, I guess. I know we had some weather impact to football game, but no, it was, it was a good week overall. Both my girls were moved by the motivational speaker that came to both the middle school and the high school, and I'm glad we could offer that to our students to have her come in and speak. So that's about it for me.
Okay, Lindsay.
Yeah, my kids really enjoyed the parade, too, and it was fun having my kindergartner talk all about it and all the fun things, even though it did rain a little bit. Yeah, nothing further for me.
All right, Maggie?
I wanted to just make special note about the National Custodians Day. I feel like they're unsung heroes in all of our buildings. I agree about the motivational speaker at the middle school. I also heard great things about, about that presentation. Yeah, thank you to our presenters tonight. And that's it for me.
All right, Bridget?
Yeah, just an extra kudos to our twenty-twenty-five Viking Alumni Award recipient, Betty Baird. I just really love hearing about and reading about individuals who received that award. And yeah, also kudos for that motivational speaker. I just think it's really cool that our student council is the entity kind of behind bringing speakers here. So just, like, really special recognition for them as well.
All right, Barb?
Finance committee met tonight for the first time this school year. Our CPA presented the preliminary audit report from the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, and discussion was had about the twenty-twenty-six operational referendum plans.
All right, Abigail?
I do want to share an equal happiness with how homecoming went. It did kind of sneak up on us this year, being only in the first few weeks, but it went really well for student council. We are especially grateful and happy with how the speaker went. That was an effort that's about six months in the making, coming up with the idea, knowing we've wanted to do this for some time. There hasn't been a speaker since I have been in the high school. So it's been a few years, and we partnered with the Booster Club to cover her expenses of being here. We got books for our student council, so all of our members, all forty-two of us, have a book of hers that is signed. And then our student services has ten additional books that they are giving to students that they feel need a reinforcement of her message especially. And I personally was able to be on the coordination team for her. Tasha Shu is a very committed person to what she's doing, and she really does care about all the kids that she connects with, not only since she's semi-local, coming from the Ellsworth area, but she really does care about each student having her message, and she has curriculum and follow-up questions and emails that we were all able to use, and her services were very helpful to us. The only other thing I have is that next week, we start with our pre-ACT prep. So the year, just after homecoming, is getting going, is starting just as usual.
All right, Khadija.
One shout-out that I have is I was watching News Channel Eight the other night and saw a really awesome piece about our apple orchard. Saw Mike Gasper on that spot talking about the educational opportunity that the apple orchard presents, and it was just a proud Viking moment for me. The other thing I want to shout out is to the two middle schoolers who were fundraising for, I didn't quite catch what it was, but came to my door, and I, we bought some cookie dough. So best of luck to them and all the other ones who are out there trying to make, trying to fundraise. I don't know that I need a cookie dough.
I have some in my house, too. I asked them what it was for, and they told me furniture, and I'm like, they should have only furniture in the middle school. I don't know. Okay, yeah, so just with all the excitement of the homecoming, homecoming last week, I did have the opportunity to attend the parade, and it's just a pleasure. I ended up talking to lots of community members, and it's just a pleasure to see how the students, the staff, and the community still all comes together for home and pride. And I also want to congratulate the football team on yet another win, even though it took two days to get there. Yeah, and then I also wanted to mention Tasha Shu. My daughter came home being really moved by her, her, her talk and her words, and I, yeah, just, I just believe that her message about purpose, attitude, team, and hope is really, really left a lasting impression on many of the students. So that was definitely a positive thing last week. And I also want to take a moment to thank two groups of staff here at the district. One is, last week was National IT Professionals Week, led by Kathleen. And I just want to thank our IT staff, as well as our custodians, with National Custodian Day coming up on October second. Both of these groups play a vital role in supporting our students' success behind the scenes, and just grateful for their dedication and commitment to our, to our district. And lastly, with the Wisconsin School Board Week soon approaching, I want to say that it's a privilege to serve with all the board members here that I sit at this table with. We are, this board is very focused on students and doing what's best with this, for the School District of Holman, and I think we demonstrate how truly committed and supportive we are for, for everyone here. So thank you for all that you do, and it's a, it's an honor to serve and, to serve with all of you. So moving on to our upcoming board meeting schedule. On October first, there's a policy committee meeting at five PM. Then on October thirteenth, there's a finance committee meeting at five PM, followed by a board meeting at seven PM. On October twentieth, there's an Excellence in Education Committee meeting at five PM. And then on October twenty-seventh is the budget hearing at six PM, followed by the annual meeting, followed by the board meeting, a regular board meeting. So is there any other business that needs to come before the board at this time? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Some of.
All right, Maggie has moved.
I guess I'll second.
Chris will second to adjourn the meeting at seven forty PM. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.